I'm calling the meeting to order. Welcome to tonight's meeting. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Here.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Here.
Treasurer Davis.
Here.
Secretary DeBarge.
Here.
Trustee Hatcher.
Here.
Trustee Landau.
Here.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
Here.
Thank you. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I feel it appropriate to take a moment to recognize the passing of former trustee Stephen Gill. Dr. Stephen Gill, a dedicated member of our Board of Trustees from 2004 to 2016, including two terms as board chair. He was a forward thinker who also served as a member of the college's strategic planning team. He took great pride in his role as a trustee and his board leadership always focused on the best interests of our students, faculty, and staff. Dr. Gill was one of the college's most ardent supporters, often taking time to converse with students, faculty, and staff at events, and always listening to their comments and ideas. In doing so, he earned the respect of our entire campus community. When his time as a trustee ended in December 2016, Dr. Gill remained available to share his thoughts and perspectives on matters relating to the college. He was a kind, generous man whose contributions to our college are immeasurable. I will miss our conversations, his advice, and words of encouragement. Please join me in a moment of silence in remembrance for former trustee Dr. Stephen Gill. Thank you for that. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Onto approval of the minutes. Tab A, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the November 19th retreat and monthly meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do you support the minutes? Yes, thank you. Second? Support? Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, all in favor of approval of the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to citizen participation. First up, the WCCA, Ms. Kissel.
Good evening. David sends his best. And what I'm not supposed to share with you, and as long as everyone promises not to say anything, he got married today.
Oh.
So I send the very best to he and to his wife Lisa. So it's very exciting. I'm tickled for him. Also, in December, we had the opportunity to celebrate some retirements, Thornton Perkins, Anne Garcia, Bonnie Arnett, totally nearly 50 years of service to the institution. So we wish them all the best as well. And of course, the WCCA sends its deepest sympathies to trustee Gill's family, and thank you so much, trustee Fleming, for that lovely tribute. So as we end 2019, and we think about the end of a decade, it should give us pause. And so with that, I'd like to share with you a poem, because I'm an English teacher, not a history teacher, by W.S. Merwin. And this is called "To the New Year." With what stillness at last you appear in the valley, your first sunlight reaching down to touch the tips of a few high leaves that did not stir, as though they had not noticed and did not know you at all. Then the voice of a dove calls from far away in itself to the hush of the morning. So this is the sound of you, here and now. Whether or not anyone hears it, this is where we have come, with our age, our knowledge such as it is, our hopes such as they are, invisible before us, untouched and still possible. So to all the possibilities, I wish you a very happy new year.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? If so, please come forward to the podium if you'd like to make a public comment. Okay, seeing none. Vanessa, were there any written communications?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to special reports. First up, the College Media Association winners, Mr. Peter Luskovich. Will you please come up here and tell us about The Voice?
Thank you. I appreciate that. So, good evening. My name is Peter Luskovich, Director of Student Development. And tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing the 2019-2020 Washington Voice Scholarship Team. This team is responsible for publishing the college's official student newspaper in print and web editions every two weeks throughout the fall and winter semesters. In October, the team traveled to the National Associated Collegiate Press Conference in Washington, D.C., where their work was recognized through four honorary awards. The team is here this evening to share their experience at the conference, and it is my pleasure to introduce them. We have Varden Sarkson. We have Catherine Ingstrom Hadley. We have Vern Gahn, Nicholas Ketchum, Claire Convis, and Lilly Kujowski. This team is advised by Judy McGovern, the coordinator of the WCC student newspaper. And without further ado, I'm going to hand it off to our wonderful journalists.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Varden Sarkson, graphic designer for the Washington Voice. And so about a month ago, we went to, got a chance to go to Washington, D.C. for an annual four-day conference. And it's held by the Associated Collegiate Press and the College Media Association. And essentially, about 1,200 college journalists meet here. And I should mention, we're one of very few two-year colleges that went. Most of them are four-year colleges. And we got to go to a number of breakout sessions on anything you can imagine within news media. And we learned a ton of different things from that experience. And in addition to that, we got to get our paper and our website critiqued by industry professionals one-on-one. And as we'll mention in a moment, we also took home a considerable amount of awards, too. So I'll let Vern take over. Or Claire take over further.
So, some of our key takeaways. Journalists can employ multimedia such as photos, graphics, and videos that can help journalists tell a story that's going to be new and interesting and engage more readers and offer new angles. And the Freedom of Information Act and the Freedom of the Press Act are legal tools that aid journalists in uncovering and reporting the truth, and student journalists at public schools are guaranteed First Amendment rights.
So among them, too, is how journalists who have an expertise in particular field or beat such as healthcare, education, or business, they have the potential to stand out in the workforce. And the role of journalism as a watchdog to prevent abuses of power is more important than ever in this age. The work that they do is a vital check on corruption and excesses in society. So working together with people of different technical skills make it possible for journalists to present stories in ways that print cannot. For example, one of the sessions that we attended introduced a 3D video that was about a school shooting. And it had originally been an award-winning article, which had been turned into a 3D virtual reality film. So it was a collaborative effort, and that it went beyond the newsroom.
So we have a couple of photos from our trip that kind of show the cool things in Washington that we got to check out. I'll kind of point to them. On the upper left corner is a slab from the Berlin Wall, actually, at the museum, which is a museum about news in Washington. And on the upper right corner is a bunch of headlines from 9/11 that was also in the museum. So we got to go to the museum, and that was a really cool opportunity to learn more about the history of journalism. On the bottom-left corner is just some of the team at the conference posing before one of the sessions. And the bottom-right corner is cool because it's a fan on the streets because the Washington Nationals actually won the World Series while we were there. So there were lots of parades, and we took a couple of photos on the street. And then the middle is just the Washington Monument.
Can you show me? I'm just Asian. Okay, sorry. Sorry about that. So the keynote speaker was Marty Baron. He has years of investigative journalism experience, and he played a key role in uncovering sexual abuse from the Roman Catholic Church. And that turned into the film Spotlight, which won a ton of awards. And he also is the editor at the Washington Post. This is a very interesting man.
So we learned a lot from Marty Baron's speech. We kind of really saw how investigative journalism is so important, upholding that watchdog role of journalists in holding public officials and institutions accountable. We see that in his work at the Boston Globe. One of the big things that he was talking about is how important diversity is in both our coverage and in newsrooms. We want to represent many stories, many perspectives, and that builds credibility over time because people see that their story is being represented, so they believe other stories are real. You know what I mean? And many, in this day and age, is all this pressure to, like, break news first. So news organizations have this pressure on them to put something out, but Marty Baron really stressed that. Even with that, accuracy is most important. Never let accuracy be compromised just in the sake of getting something out or breaking it first. Another thing we hear a lot is fake news. And that's kind of used to undermine or discredit journalists. But to quote Marty Baron during the speech, "If we were in the business of fake news, we wouldn't need 850 people." So journalists just got to get to work, you know, fact-check. That's how we build credibility, and that will show over time. Nicholas Ketchum got to ask a question to Marty Baron during the Q&amp;A section, which was really cool. So we asked him about the impact of satire and comedy-based news on traditional news
And we were honored to receive a couple of national awards, and this includes community colleges, four-year universities, Ivy League universities. We took first place for Best Editorial. And we also placed Best in Show for our print and digital editions. That includes the website. And that shows how we collaborate closely as a team. We work together. That's digital, photography, editorial. What am I missing? Design, specially designed, and the writing. So we feel very proud and honored to have been, received those awards.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Could we have Lilly and Nicholas come up?
Thank you so much. This is so sweet. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm so proud of you guys. I just can't believe how well you've been doing. And I just got to say, I'm so proud and thrilled that I can sit here and support our student newspaper. Because, you know, in Washington County, it is still one of the best newspapers in Washington. The state of major print is dying. I'm so proud that we, as a public and a community, can support this small student newspaper and train the next generation of journalists. Thank you very much about us creating new journals. You know, it's very important in the industry. Very important, you know. Just kudos to you guys. I'm so proud.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for the support.
That was really good. Yeah. So that was both, was that two reports in one? Because I have Peter down for both. Was that two in one, Peter?
It was two in one.
I had you down for the press conference update and the winners, but we did both of that. Okay. Okay, never mind. All right, moving on to monthly reports. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for coming. Okay. Tab B, Personnel Recommendations. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as listed. Do I hear a motion for personnel recommendations? So moved. Support?
Support.
Okay. Any discussion on the personnel recommendations? VP Veltre, do you want to comment or anything? Are we good?
Well, I, I'm excited to hear trustee Hatcher's thoughts about the recommendations.
We have, there are four new administrative positions in this pack, right? Not replacements, but four new administrative positions. And it seems as though, under the VP of Enrollment and Management, we're now getting a director. Is that correct?
Well, we have, there are, yes, there are four new independent positions. A couple of the positions are at the director level. That's correct.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, three directors and one coordinator. So there's a whole new page under the VP of Enrollment. Is that right?
I'm not, you mean from an organizational chart perspective?
Yes, right, right.
I don't believe there's a whole new page.
Okay.
The position, that Director of Enrollment Services position is one that I think, you know, the Board is well aware, and we've talked about, you know, the challenges that we face in terms of enrollment and shifting student demographics. And that role really is consistent with the need for the college to continue to be more strategic around our enrollment services. And the focus, at least, is intended to be, you know, to really look at our enrollment process and to make sure that it's student-centric. And so, I mean, that's the logic behind the position. But I don't think that there's an entire new page in terms of our org chart.
Not yet, okay. So there's, is there more staff to come under Enrollment Management?
Not, not that I'm aware of. We are looking at our budget, but not that I'm aware of.
And the Director of Workforce and Community, there's someone who's Director of Workforce and Community Enrichment, right? Is that Mr. or Ms. Zervos? And now there's the Workforce Community Development Person. So there are two, right? Is that true?
Do you want me to answer that?
I don't care.
Okay, I'll answer it. Those are two separate positions, two very different job functions. And the first one, in terms of what Shelley Zervos does, she still does that, and she's responsible for what she's always been responsible for, and that's all of the community enrichment and all of the training that's done in terms of directorship, not the person that goes out and, you know, recruits it. But she is that director in charge of that. That has not changed. However, the position that you are addressing right now is a reallocation of a position. And it was a reallocation from, because we, what we did is we took workforce, and we divided it into two areas. And one area is under Brandon Tucker, and that is workforce development, where he will go out and work with organizations to do customized training and to do on the operational level. And also, he will work very closely with the community to find out what their community needs are. Because we realized that that was a real big void and need from us for, and really, we heard that from people out in the community. So it's a re, I don't know what position it was relocated from, but I know it's a relocated position. Do you know which one?
Yeah, from Nico. And basically, what, in addition to that, we realigned apprenticeship underneath that position. So when somebody goes out and works with business and industry, now they can present a holistic solution to the business and industry community in terms of whether it's credit or non-credit, and that's a change from what we had.
So Nico's position will be, has been reallocated to this and won't be filled. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on personnel? Go ahead, Diane.
I just want to just say again how much I want to appreciate the people who are retiring, who are ending employment here. Anne Garcia, Thornton Perkins, and Frank Gerlicks. I picked those people out because of the length of time that they were here and how much they devoted their lives to this institution, and I really appreciate that. I just want to give my little two cents on their service.
Thank you. Dave?
I guess I have a question. So I see five full-time instructional faculty ending employment. And are we diminishing our courses available? Are all the coursework that they were teaching, are those going away? How are we replacing them? And I also, I'm aware that our union contract has some sort of a ratio requirement that we can't not exceed a certain percentage of full-time employees with adjuncts. So it's, we can only, we're limited to the number of adjuncts we can hire based on a ratio that's established in the union contract. Is the departure of these full-time faculty, is that throwing that ratio out of balance?
Not right now, because actually, the Frank Gerlicks position and the Anne Garcia position, actually because they left in the middle of the school year, there are some temp full-times in those positions. Because we still, there's a lot of load that still needs to be covered in those areas. And so we'll evaluate how those positions will be filled for this current budget process that we're in right now. But based on the areas that they're teaching, we're going to have to figure something out. So we would never just get rid of those courses, because those are courses that are integral to most degrees that we offer.
Right, I see that, yeah.
So, yeah, like I said, Thornton, not Thornton, Anne and Frank, those actually right now have temporary full-time positions, people in those positions right now because they needed to be filled. We need to cover those classes.
Okay.
You will be seeing some faculty hires.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's just middle of the year.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor of supporting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, on to tab C, the financial report. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial report for November 2019 as follows. General Fund, Deferred Maintenance Fund, Capital Fund, and Combined Schedule of Investments All Funds. Do I hear a motion for the financial report?
So, second?
Second, okay. Any discussion on the financial report? Would you like to add anything here?
I think just a couple of points to highlight. On the revenue side, in total, we are right on track to budget. As we have been talking about, we continue to face external pressures regarding enrollment for both fall, and we expect that we're going to be down slightly for winter as well. It'll track, we think, at about the same pace, down year over year to about 3% down in credit hours. However, this past summer, we had a very strong summer, and that's helping to offset, not in full, but in large part. And then to offset that, both property tax revenue and state aid are both trending above budget. Property tax revenue, because prior-year refunds is lower than what we expected, and that's a good thing for us. And then on state aid, the state has been able to fund a little bit more of the increasing costs related to MEPsers, and that's helped us to defray some of our costs related to MEPsers. So overall, revenue is right on track. Expenditures are tracking below budget, largely in personnel, and largely because our independent staff are tracking below budget to a lot larger extent than what had been assumed for that. But overall, we expect to be at or slightly better than budget for the year, given the current pace.
Any questions from Mr. Johnson?
I have a couple. I mean, with respect to revenue, part of the decline in is, in student, is in returning student enrollment. So my question is, are the enrollment vice president and new person involved in retention as well as enrollment? Because this seems to point to a retention issue rather than an initial enrollment issue.
So, may I? You looked at him, so. Well, they all meet as a team. Actually, they met today. Bill Johnson meets with them. And it's our vice president, Mika Gaskill, as well as vice president of Instruction, Kim Hearn, and usually Linda Blakely, but she's out right now. But when it comes to retention, it's everybody's job. But that's mostly, retention has a lot to do with what happens in the classroom, what happens between the, you know, what happens in the classroom, in advising, all of those places. Not all of it is there, but that's the retention. Now, where Mika could fall short is if she doesn't reach out to them to make sure they enroll, that if she doesn't schedule opportunities, you know, she's mostly, like, our new students that she's responsible for, that enrollment is soaring. But it's the returning student that, and we are trying to, right now, we still don't have the data, and it's really hard for, believe it or not, it's hard for us to get this data. It's hard for me to believe, too, but it is, to find out who's not returning and why, you know, so that we can understand either where they are, are they transferring early? Because sometimes they might be. We, for a long time, we talked about the master transfer agreement. It's 30 and out. So that could have been the wrong message to give. So people get to their 30, and instead of staying for 60, the way we had hoped they would, they leave at 30. So that was a message that we had been sending. That is a message that universities send, because universities would love to have them after 30 instead of waiting till 60. So it could be the messaging, could be advising, it could be that they get jobs now because the economy is good. And according to this article that we have included in here, I was told today, actually, by Mika from this article, that the 11%, there's 11% decline in college enrollment for all levels of colleges. So it could be because of the job market. We don't know. But we are trying to figure that out. You said something about that last time, too, I believe.
Guess so.
And so, you know, we are looking at that. Right now, we don't have the ability, and I forget, what are we waiting for? Is there some kind of report we're supposed to get from somewhere? What is it the?
So the launching of our new CRM tool, the Targetex tool, will really allow us to look at a student across their entire life cycle, and that we'll be able to better understand and relate enrollment strategies with retention strategies all the way through.
That's what I'm asking about, because there's such an influence all the time on enrollment. And it seems to me we can increase that paragraph if we also pay attention to retention.
And that is exactly what we believe also. But I just want, can I just say one more thing?
Please go ahead.
Thank you, sir. It could be for a good reason. People could be.
Of course. I'm not questioning that. I'm just wanting to.
No, I'm telling, I'm just, I'm not saying it to you. I'm just saying it actually to myself, to remind myself and remind all of us here that our, you know, our graduation rate, our completion rate last year went up. So people could have left because they completed what they needed. So there could also be a good reason. But I assure you, promise you, we are focusing on retention as well. I'm sorry now, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Well, there's something else that's germane to this conversation, I think, and there's a, there's a population of students that are financially challenged, and the Washington Community College Foundation and the Student Emergency Fund are now in place and growing and able to help some students that are in a page that we otherwise might lose. So that's another place where credit should be.
Yeah, that's a real proactive approach. Yeah, a proactive approach to retention, yeah. That's wonderful.
Did you have a question, Dave?
President Blanca already hit on this. I was going to suggest that our increased emphasis on completion would be bringing students to a point where it's, they can leave with a completion, which is what we're here for. And that could be one of the causes for our decrease in retention, that those people are moving on with completed certificates and degrees to whatever their next
are moving on with completed certificates and degrees, to whatever their next step is, and whatever research we can do with the new tools to document that, I think is just gonna be positive as we go forward, working with state and federal funding agencies to try to get money. We can show that as a big success, that is, deserves increased funding from federal and state agencies.
Thank you. Agree? Go ahead, Diane.
I'm just gonna say this, and we all know this already, is that this institution does a good job in training. And so, a lot of people don't want to go any further, because employers are hiring them before they complete the training, because they're doing a good job here. So, that's really another good factor that's involved in this.
The only other comment I'd offer for the Board is on page four, the Deferred Maintenance Fund, just to highlight for the Board. So, to date, since inception under the Board's direction, we funded about $20 million into the Deferred Maintenance Fund, and about 13.4, that is already gone towards projects that have been completed. And we have about $5.6 million that's under progress as we speak. And so, that leaves us an unallocated balance of about $760,000, but we already have another half a million worth of projects that are on deck. And so, the fund is being fully utilized, and very much appreciate that support.
Any other questions? All in favor of the report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Moving on to Facilities Development Report, tab D. VP Johnson, do you have any comments here for us?
Just a few. We are right in the middle of the holiday break period. We're actually starting about a week before we all go out on break. We have 13 major projects that are all going on as we speak. Just to highlight a couple of those, on the first page, item 11, the LA Chem Hood Repairs, that's about 24 separate hoods, but it's a complete system that we are replacing on all three floors. Again, I'll just say it, that the faculty were just outstanding in working with facilities to find a way to create enough of a time window for our contractors to get in there and do the really important work that they needed to do. We've successfully completed the first floor, and albeit that's only about four hoods, but that was a really important first step, because you have a theory as to how you wanna approach these repairs. And we kinda cut our teeth on that first floor, those went very well. So, now, we're up on floors two and three, and they're working double shifts and weekends, and they'll be working straight through. So, that's a really important one, and I think is going along nicely. Secondly, item 12, the top of page two, and that project and its companion project, which is in Campus Repair Maintenance on page three, item 10, we are doing floor replacements, second floor replacements, both in LA and in SC, and it's a pretty significant, both flooring and wall upgrades. And those will be done, the second floor of SC will be done by January 2nd. And as I think I mentioned to the Board, the LA one is quite involved. So, we will have all the old floor off, and the floor prepped, and then, we'll be doing in third shift, meaning the midnight shift, actually putting down the new floor in LA. So, each and every day, there will be progress as we lay the new floor, but in that third shift, and that'll take about two months to fully finish that. And that includes the bridge between LA and SC as well. But a lot of projects, the facilities team is gonna be working every day during break, and we're gonna have a lot of contractors that are already here on campus, and it's tough, it's tough on the campus, because there's a lot of noise, there's, we're asking folks to go in different doors, and so, it's something that we need to work as a team in our, across campus to make this be a success, so.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Actually, I have one other question on the previous item. Should we move and have a vote to accept the financial report?
I don't think we vote on the financial report. It's usually on later financial statements we do it, isn't that right?
I thought we usually vote to accept it.
It's an action item.
Did we vote on the financial?
Yes.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, we did vote on.
We did vote, we did.
It's not a roll call. We did vote aye.
I missed it.
We just aye. Okay.
How would you like your vote to be recorded? I'm sorry.
I could do it, Chairman Nattler, did any members not get to vote? You wanna vote? Go ahead, Ruth.
I just wanted to thank you for doing this extra work in facilities, and wondering, at the same time, are we, how's the search coming for a new Associate VP of the facilities?
We actually, he is here.
Oh, good.
Mr. Craig, Craig Whipsta.
I thought so, yeah.
Has been with us now for a couple months.
Good.
And Craig is, and the managers are doing a wonderful job of focusing, Craig's first day is on the operations side, to really get all the maintenance teams focused on trying to serve the campus to the best. We just did a survey, a campus-wide survey of quality of facilities, maintenance work, and we're taking all that in, and Craig and his team are building a plan to close all those little gaps that have been identified through the survey.
Well, thanks to both of you. The other thing I just wanted to mention about when maintenance things are going, major things are going on while there are classes here, it really does help for faculty and staff to know what's going on. They tend to panic, you know, if they smell something, and they don't know that something's going on. So, that kind of information back and forth, today, we're doing the floors, tomorrow, we're doing the walls, and that you might smell something, is really very helpful, so people don't call 911 all the time. So, I appreciate that.
Go ahead, Diane.
I was gonna say something.
It's okay.
It'll come. Oh, I know what it is. So, what's gonna happen with the folks here in this, in the MLB building, when you start doing renovations?
So, we are, if I may, we are currently exploring a couple of options. We have about 45 staff here in the building. So, from the academic side, VP Hearn is already working with the deans to find all alternate locations for the six-month period. But for all other activities that go on related to staffing, we're trying to find different homes, and we're exploring a couple of different options for that.
So, the building will be shut down?
It'll be shut down.
That's good.
And I think it'd be good to talk about how you've communicated this message already to those that, just so that you know, we have communicated this message already to those who lease our building for that period.
Sure, use it regularly.
Right, we've done that.
A couple of years ahead of time. We worked with VP Mueller and her team, and we're also looking at recommending some alternate off-site locations, if we can't house, house them here on campus, in other buildings, because the goal is to keep them as customers after.
Right.
So, they're doing a great job of that.
Okay, good. And the food service, is that?
Food service, so Fabulous Foods will be shut down in this building. They are currently exploring, for those events that are gonna be hosted in other buildings on campus, ways of being able to serve them food.
Okay.
Because the kitchen will be shut down.
The kitchen will?
Yes.
Everything's gonna be shut down.
Everything's gonna be shut down. We may be able to make some friends in the hotel-restaurant community by redirecting business to the favors that they will remember us for.
That's a good point.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. All right, moving on to remarks of the members of the Board. Would anybody like to say anything? Go ahead, Mr. Malick.
I would. I used to write for my college newspaper, and I was proud to see these people standing up here today with Peter's leadership and duties, and I hope that in 10 years, there'll be people that were with us tonight that will have bylines on big papers, and will all remember them, because they came from LACC.
That's great. Very good.
We do have a few MLive reporters on their way up.
Go ahead.
We do make good journalists. They're all over the state, even with Detroit News.
Eastern.
Well, actually, they're spread all over the country, actually. We have a lot of voicers out there.
There was one of the Flint reporters.
Yeah, and a Flint reporter, yeah. Go ahead.
Yes, I really am gonna direct this to Angela, Trustee Davis. Angela and I, when we went to Steve Gill's service last Friday, and we're trying to figure out where we're gonna go get something to eat, because we were starved, but we didn't go get anything to eat. We went over to the Black Diesel, and never been in there, it's a coffee shop, but I didn't know, that's the first time. And I was waiting on what we were ordering, and Angela was standing at this, I don't know what it was.
Oh, yeah, I guess you can call it.
A what?
A kiosk. You know, for the condiments and such. And I saw a young lady, she was dressed full outdoor gear, you know, the overalls or coveralls, I believe it was called, her boots, and she was just dressed, and I, and...
Construction outfit.
Yeah, construction outfit, thank you. So, and I'm looking at her, and I'm saying to myself, what is it that she does that, because she exudes such confidence in her walk and her posture and such, even though she was in full construction gear, and to be a female, I'm like, wow, you know, who is she? Because you don't see it. I mean, let's be honest, you don't see many women dressed like that. And I made a comment, and I said something to the effect of, wow, you know, whatever it is that you do, you're doing it well. And I, you know, modern technology, the millennials, I thought she was on the phone, because she had earbuds in her ear, and she was talking low, and she looked at me, and she kept talking. I said, are you on the phone? She says, no, I'm talking to you, I'm a sculptor, but I weld. I said, you do? Well, come to find out, she's a WCC graduate from the Arts Department here. She graduated this past May, but she didn't walk, and she was kinda bouncing around and such, and she landed a welding job. And she also works for a landscaping company, too. And she, which was surprising to me and quite uplifting, she recommended a waitress to try out an interview for a welding position, and the young lady got hired right away. And it was fascinating to talk to her, because she mentioned that there is such a need for females in that field. And I told her just a little bit that I knew of the employers looking for females, because they are so good at handling the torch, they're very detail-oriented, all the other traits, not to say that men don't have it, but women just have that it a little bit more. And the pay is exceptional. So, with all of that said, I had asked her, had she ever thought about coming to the college here to try and help maybe, you know, spread the word, hey, you know, more females, you can do it, you know, just, I don't know, I don't know, but is there a way in which we can get the females who graduate from like the Arts Department, or Industrial Arts Department, or something of that nature, that could come back and help to encourage that field, just like we have with women in science, you know? So, I wanted to also, I wanted to bring that up, so Trustee McKnight-Morton, you know, segwayed that in for me, but I thought it was just so fascinating, and I wanted to let everybody know that we have such fabulous students from WCC out here, not to mention, you know, the young journalists that we saw here, just exceptional, exceptional students that walk out of this campus into the world and just make such a major impact, and they have such a persona about themselves that makes you wanna stop and ask, who are you? What do you do, and where did you come from? That's it, thank you.
Well, what caught my interest and Angie's interest, oh, this young lady, this stand, it had like napkins and forks and stuff like that, but it was metal. And when she came into the building, she was walking around, looking at what was going on, and the structure of this metal stand. So, when Angela started talking to her, she says, I was just looking at the work of the, how it was welded together, because I'm a welder. And that's how it got going. And it was so interesting in her conversation with us, and like Angela said, this young lady was just like exuberant in her description of what she does, and she's in art, but she's a welder. And that was the main thing about it. We just wanted to share that with everyone, because we run across people like that all the time.
That is a good idea, though, to, I know that we're working on an alumni association to reach out to alums, but it's also a good idea, you know, when you think about recruiting, it would be great to get someone like that, you know, get her name next time.
I have it.
Oh. Give it to me, Doc. Anyway, but, you know, those are good ideas, those are good ideas, to get someone in a non-traditional.
Exactly. Yeah.
Any other remarks from the Board? Okay. Madam President?
Yes, I do. And I just want to say that, before I begin with my comments at the last meeting, Trustee Landau, you asked for some information, and we are working on it. I don't have a complete answer for you tonight.
Okay.
But I can give you some highlights afterwards.
Okay.
But I just want you to know that.
Cool.
Okay. This has been a really interesting week. Yesterday was something I never thought I would do, and I was asked to moderate a town hall meeting yesterday for a discussion on criminal justice reform, and it was hosted by Michigan Attorney General Dana Nessel, and also, we were, the panel included Michigan Supreme Court Bridget McCormick, and Michigan Department of Corrections Director Heidi Washington, along with, you can see our two friends there, Jeff, Senator Jeff Erwin, I'm sorry, yeah, Senator Jeff Erwin, and Representative Yusef Robi. And the discussion was about raising, you know, the raising of correction expenses, the mental health services, and the impact the loss of mental health services has had on the incarceration rate. But the good news is, there is a reduction in the recidivism, I, these words are pronounced sometimes are tongue twisters.
That's the right one.
I did it? Okay, good. And we are really doing pretty good in that. Amazing, this woman who, right, the one you see that's speaking, that is the Department of Corrections Director Heidi Washington, I didn't know there were 30, did you know there were 30 correction, like prisons in Michigan? I had no idea. She's in charge of all the prisons, she's in charge of everything that goes on in the prisons, the parole, the programming, and everything like that. And she talked, she also talked about the importance of education in reducing recidivism. And we had an audience, and so, people in the audience were able to ask questions. There wasn't enough time, really, because I, actually, I believe the people who came really had some questions that they personally needed answered. So, I wish we could have spent more time, but it was, we were only allowed a certain amount of time.
Where was it held?
It was here, it tells the auditorium right in that room.
Great.
Whatever. So, it was very, it was really a good opportunity, and they asked to speak here. So, thank you, Patrick, for organizing it, and appreciate it. We also had a campus tour last week with State Senator Jeff Erwin and Yusef... We also had a campus tour last week with State Senator Jeff Erwin and Yusef Robi. And you see Adam Zemke, who's also working with us right now in that tour. You know, it's amazing, we think that they know everything there is to know about what we do, but they don't. And it was a great opportunity for us to share what we are doing in advanced transportation. They were pretty interested in learning more about cybersecurity and what we were doing with, you know, in advanced transportation in the slingshot. So it was a good meeting. And, you know, our on the record is, they thanked me for having their picture on the record. So, because people went up to them and said, we saw your photo on the record. So people read on the record. So it was very glad. I was really glad to see that. Okay, the scholarship luncheon was phenomenal. And I'd like to thank Diana McKnight Morton, Bill Milliken, and Angela Davis for attending. And I really would like to congratulate.
I was not there.
I really want to congratulate Phil Snyder, because it was amazing. There, again, we moved out the walls, how many people were there, Phil? Three fifty? Three hundred and fifty people were there at that scholarship luncheon. So we have, it was really a very successful luncheon. So thank you, thank you, thank you and your team. And the Women of Washington had their ugly sweater get together. They look, they're pretty, they're really.
They did a good job.
Yeah, they're really creative.
Those aren't ugly sweaters, they're holiday sweaters.
So anyway, they put together eight boxes filled with donations. And the Women of Washington, as you, I don't know if you know this, is affiliated with the Michigan chapter of the American Council of Education ACE. So we have prizes, and we do encourage people to go to the conference when they're in town. Kim Hearn's president.
Yeah.
The chair of ACE, Michigan ACE. And, okay, what's her name in your area that does it?
Andrea Hambo.
Andrea is the one who organizes it. And Shayna Barker, so thank you so much. And cheers again, did an outstanding job. I feel bad I wasn't able to make it, but they did an outstanding job for our employee outfit, employee luncheon. So I'd like to thank the board for all of your support to enable us to do these great things for each other and for the community and for our students. So thank you. And this is Sam's last meeting with us. And I want to take this opportunity to publicly thank you, Sam, for the job that you have done as the Vice President of Human Resources and Labor Relations. You put in a lot of good practices into place. And you are a Vice President of HR that, I told you I was going to give you a big letter E, has a lot of empathy, which I think is really an essential quality for a good HR person. So we will miss you, and we wish you well in your next career.
Thank you very much, thank you.
You're welcome. I'll tell you what, how we're replacing him. Of course, he's irreplaceable, so, but what we're going to try to do, no. According, Sam, I mean, gave us a recommendation, Chris Mahaly will be promoted to the Associate Vice President of HR. And Katie, what's her last name, I'm sorry?
DeLong.
DeLong, Katie DeLong, who's also an attorney hired by Sam. She has been working with him for over a year, nearly two years. About?
Yes.
And she will be working in, on the labor relations side. And they will be reporting to me and dotted line to Larry where, you know, wherever necessary. So I guess I'm glad my background was HR. I never knew I needed again, but, so that's where we're moving in that direction. Thank you.
All right, moving on to old business, tab E. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees grant the submitted retirees emeritus staff status as stated by Board Policy 5045, policy on emeritus staff. Do I hear a motion to support?
So moved.
Second?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion on tab E for this? Okay, all in favor of emeritus, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Excellent. Moving on to tab F, the Advanced Transportation Center capital funding request. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the Advanced Transportation Center capital project in the amount of $7,900,000. The funding for this project will include $1.9 million from the state of Michigan and the balance of approximately $6 million funded from a new college bond issue in mid-2021. This approval is granted with the understanding that the final terms and timing of the new bond issue are presented to the Board of Trustees before the contract to construct the Advanced Transportation Center is approved. Do I hear a motion for this?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion on tab F? Any questions, comments? Okay.
I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
For what it's worth, which isn't much, I'm going to be voting against this. I'm not convinced that the bond issue is the way to go, and I'm not convinced of the, never was convinced, of the need for the building, for the curriculum and the program that it was, it's designed for. So I just wanted to let people know ahead of time that I would be voting no.
Any other comments on this? Okay, go ahead, Dave.
This is, of course, my primary hope when I first ran six years ago was, or my goal was to emphasize the arts part of STEAM. And this is not that. And I've done everything I can to encourage expansion of our liberal arts offerings. And the college has been very forward-thinking in doing that. This is something that I've looked at carefully. It's a partnership, I think, with the, I believe, I'll be voting for this, but it's a partnership with the entire community. It's with the industrial community in the, in this southeast Michigan area. It's a partnership with other educational institutions like University of Michigan and the engineering program there. And it's a partnership with the state, and the state is anting up a substantial amount of money. I was, I'm very encouraged to see that as part of this, we're looking at a solar array adjacent to the site that'll help reduce or provide clean energy. And I've expressed privately to many of the people here my hope that Washington Community College could, in the future, as we build out and rehabilitate our aging buildings, that we look to whatever we can do to be leaders in addressing the issue of climate change. And that means working to reduce the energy usage of facilities and to build in alternative clean energy supply. I see this building as doing that. It's looking at a silver lead sort of application, and we have the array, the solar array to bring in clean energy. And I see that as a first step in really being community leaders to address the issue of climate change. And I think the community will appreciate that, and will, we already have strong support throughout the county among our taxpayers, taxpaying citizens. And I think these sorts of steps will increase or will really justify the continuing support from our county residents.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Milliken.
I'll be voting for this measure as well. I think transportation technology is moving forward at exponential speed right now. We are uniquely positioned with automakers, suppliers, American Center for Mobility over at Willow Run to marshal some of these resources and develop great synergy here. This is a winner.
Any other comments, go ahead, Diana.
I'd just like to echo both of my colleagues here. I think at this point in time, if, we are already on the cusp of doing a lot with the, you know, the, having the new machinery that we purchased and that we were really, pretty, far as I can tell, that we were pretty much the only community college that had purchased the C-step and what has come from there. It has shown that we are a leader. And with this type of step out that we started with, under Dr. Blanca's leadership three, four years ago, and being appointed by the governor to be the leader, to take this ATC further, and then for us to go out to Willow Run, as my colleague mentioned, and get a office space out there. I think this, and collaboration with other community colleges in this area, because if we don't do it, they're already doing it, or going to start doing it. So we have to be still a leader. We have to still show to our community that we are what they want to be. They want to be here at this school. And that we're talking about having, getting enrollment, and you're talking about having retention. This is something that we'll have enrollment and retention with. Because far as I'm concerned, in order for them to go any further, they're going to need to be, complete their program here. This is a great step for us. And I appreciate your leadership and your team leadership in what you have been doing. And I will be voting for this.
Thank you.
Any other comments, go ahead, Dave.
One thing to add, given the amount of other projects that we may be looking, that we are actually in today's packet with the Morris Lawrence Building and other rehab and renovation that we have ahead of us in the coming years, I think the way to go with this is to issue tax-free bonds as a community college to, if we can issue tax-free bonds, maybe, I guess, the financial department might, they'll look at the best way to issue the bonds. Interest rates are low, the payment is, now is the time to do it. And I think that's the way to go, and it enables us to keep enough in our fund reserve, fund balance, to look ahead to the next thing on our item, the Morris Lawrence Building and other things in the future. So I really, I actually think the way to go with this one is to issue tax bonds.
Any other questions or comments on this? All right, we're going to call the roll. Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Yes.
Secretary DeVarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
No.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Moving on to tab G, the Morris Lawrence Building renovation. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the Morris Lawrence renovation capital project in the amount of $9 million, and that the funding for this project be provided by a transfer of general fund reserves to the capital fund in the amount of $9 million. Do I hear a motion? So moved. Second?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions on this? Would you like to comment on anything here, VP Johnson?
No, we, as you all know, we are anxious to get a board vote on this, so we proceed to putting it out for bid, which we're preparing to do in January.
Go ahead, Dave.
Before Vice President Damon Flowers left, he gave us a tour of the building and some of the facade falling off and the age, nature of the skylight and a lot of these things. This building is a tremendous asset to the community. People, organizations throughout the county make use of the facilities here, and it's been just a vital asset to the community. Additionally, our audio arts, our music arts that are head, functioned here with studio, with their practice facilities, this is their place where they really operate from. And we have a tremendous music arts program here that I see any investment in keeping this building at the state of the art is vital. I'm also encouraged by the fact that we're going to significantly diminish energy consumption in the building. In changing the skylight, we're going to be changing the orientation so that heating and cooling needs are, just from that one feature, are reduced. I encouraged Vice President Johnson, and I'd like to once again state that here we have, and this will be going forward a year or so from now, here we have another construction project where we can look to the possibility of adding features that add clean energy, that help us already by reducing our energy consumption significantly, that's a step towards addressing the issue of climate change. Anything additional we can do to that, on top of that, is very important, and I'd like to be here to advocate for that down the road. Vice President Johnson told me that DTE is actually interested in investing in solar arrays or in other forms of energy production. And this could be, not that it is, and it's, I'm not saying that this is necessarily in the future, but it is an opportunity for us to work with our local electricity provider, electric and gas provider, to see what we can do, and maybe they can invest dollars so they can meet the needs that the Public Service Commission is requiring of them to address the need of, you know, to address these issues of providing clean energy. And maybe this provides us an opportunity to partner with them. Again, these sorts of partnerships are the kinds of things that we need. I'm very happy to know that we will be improving our sound studio facilities for our music students. And it looks like that there's an opportunity for us to bring back our art gallery. And as we, now that we're offering an associate degree in fine arts, and we've, our students have been successful in state competitions with getting awards, this is an opportunity for us in the most public, the facility that has the greatest interface with the public, with all the groups that use it, to have in the site an art gallery as a way to present this aspect of our arts education to the entire community. I'm really encouraged by that. So, there are many reasons that I love this proposal. And I hope to be able to vote in the future on ways to add some clean energy projects into it, either on our own or in partnership with our local utility provider. So I'll be voting for this.
Any other comments here? Okay, Vanessa, please call the roll. Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Yes.
Secretary DeVarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. New business, moving on to tab H, building automation make-to-mates contract. Okay, VP Johnson, want to add anything?
Thank you, yes, please. As you might know, our HVAC systems are not perfect, and there are places on campus that are sometimes too warm, sometimes too cold. That has come about over the years through not providing a comprehensive maintenance program around all our HVAC systems. We are largely a Siemens building automations control campus. The Gundermeyer Building is Honeywell, but it integrates well with Siemens controls. So one of the first contributions that ABP Craig Whiptock made was to leverage his deep knowledge of HVAC systems. He actually started out as a boiler operator, working for the Northville Schools, and worked and worked his way up. And Craig had just worked at the DMC where he had worked with Siemens. So he worked for about two months on a comprehensive maintenance program with Siemens
with Siemens for all of our building automation systems. And he and his team strongly backed this three-year agreement, which will provide not only the ongoing maintenance, but the replacement of some of the faulty controls that we have and really address in a holistic way our HVAC systems across the campus.
Any questions on this? Could really use it. Yeah. I'm right here. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Again, controls are at the fundamental core of saving energy, these sorts of HVAC controls. And I, what I'm not seeing here is any sense, I, my guess would be, and I know I've had energy audits at facilities that I own or manage, and they always come up with things like, one is thermostatic controls automated that save a significant amount of energy. I'm not seeing anything that speaks to that in this proposal. And we need to replace these. But I would like to, if possible, say, hey, you know, not only are we spending this $580,000, but we can look to forward, going forward, that we're going to see energy saving, energy cost savings that, I don't know if there's a payback on these or what the payback horizon is on these. But that's the kind of thing that would be nice to see addressed. But if they need to be replaced, I'll be, when we need to vote for this, I'll be voting for it. But if, down the road, if you come back with this, if there is, I don't want to put a lot of work on your plate. But if you can easily get me some sense of energy savings or projected cost savings with reduced energy usage, that would be great. We certainly can. One of the key things that this is going to allow us to do is to allow the original system designs to work as they were built and installed. And there was a lot of energy efficiencies that were built into these designs that over the years have been disabled. And so, Craig Whipstock's goal is, along with our manager of, of energy, we have a dedicated manager that works on energy conservation, Bill, Bill Greyst. And so, one at the cores is energy savings on this.
Go ahead, Diana.
Trustee DeVarty says something about like, I'll just say a thermostat. Is that what you were saying?
Well, these controls are more sophisticated than the...
Than a household.
The household thermostats. But by getting automated thermostats in your household, you can save energy.
Right. And so, what you're saying, because I'm thinking like, if, if you're going to do all of this, would, would there be an upgrade to this type of control? So that even though it's already, you already, we already have it, but it would be upgraded? Is that what will be happening? Or it's going to stay the same, but they're going to do something else to make it more energy efficient?
Maybe I'll let Craig Whipstock in. Beyond my expertise right now.
Well, we have four reasons we're going through. The building automation system already has like night setbacks and controls it from the central point, central control point. What we're doing is looking at all the controls in each one of the air handler and re-commissioning them. A, making sure if, if the building automation system is telling the bell, go to 50% open, you know, sometimes over time, you know, that gets out, we'd be saying, go to 50%, and it's only going to 20%, or it goes to 100. We have not verified, you know, that. This is going back and re-commissioning every one of those points that's controlling the air handlers. So, the building automation system already has energy savings functions designed within it. We're making sure that they're, they're working properly. You know, thermostats go out of, you know, calibration over the years. And you have to go back in and sometimes replace them or put offsets on, on the program to make sure that they're calibrated right. You could have a space that's at 68, but we're reading it at 72. We think everything's fine, but our customer's saying, hey, we're holding here. And that's going back, and that's what we're going to be doing, is verifying the whole control system of Siemens contract. And a lot of these control panels are outdated and unsupported. It's like you can't get parts, they can't do anything to them. So, in the past, we've been, when they fail, then replace them in emergency nature. We've identified which ones have been non-supported, and we're going to replace them before failure.
Gotcha. So, what, my other question then to Vice President Johnson is, do you know when was the last time that this had been upgraded or has not ever been upgraded?
It's, it's, it's never been done on a holistic and integrated sense. We've always done it, as, as EVP Wisshoff said, when things failed, we would fix it. But we've never addressed the, it's more than the control system itself. It's every one of the mechanicalist devices that are attached to, to that system. And so, with Siemens and with Craig's team, Bo, Bo Bergen and his team does an amazing job. But they've never had the support of a contract like this to be able to get the greatest value out of the systems as they were designed and, and installed. So, we're going to deal with the devices and with the controls and get them to work as designed.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ruth.
This contract won't involve replacing any of our current facility staff?
No, will not at all.
Good, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Let's go on to Tab I.
Well, um, do, is there any rush to, for us to vote on this right now? Or we can wait till next year?
You know, the, I mean, to be honest, the sooner that the contract is in place, the sooner that we're able to start the, the work.
Well, it's, um, so...
What's the board's recommendation?
Without, if there is no objection, I would move to have this acted on tonight. Unless there's any single person...
Is there anybody who would object to raising Tab H to be an action item? Anybody opposed to that?
No. Do we have to vote on changing that?
We have to vote on it.
First, we have to amend the agenda. So, I need a motion to amend the agenda to change Tab H to an action item.
Shove it. Support?
Support, okay. All in favor of that? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, we amended the agenda, this is now an action item. So, now I need a motion to approve it. So moved.
Support.
Support. Okay. And now, is this a roll call?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's money.
Vanessa, please take the roll. Chair Fleming? Yes. Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Yes.
Secretary DeVarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McNaughan Horn?
Yes.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you very much. Appreciate this.
Ask for one thing.
Yeah.
Next month, when we get our facilities report, if we could get a sense addressing the energy ramifications or energy use ramifications of moving ahead with this. I know it's after we voted, but I'd like to be aware of any benefits that we're seeing from that.
Would that be too soon? Would it be too soon to get it?
I'm not sure. Whatever, whatever you need or...
It'll be a theoretical...
Yeah.
Right.
All right. Tab I, the amended design contract for the ML renovation project. This is a discussion. VP Johnson, you want anything here?
When we had first come, come to the board with the design contract, which the board had approved, awarded Hobson Black, we had in that scope to not replace all the air handler units in the building, just one of them, one that had not been replaced. We have five in total. Air handler unit four was part of the firing range. The board had approved that. We've got that work done. Air handler unit three was the one that was in the original scope. Once this contract originally was approved, we then brought in the system engineers and did an entire assessment. And boy, it, it was clear to us that we needed to replace all the remaining air handler units. The project the board approved tonight for $9 million replaces all those units. We, we need the, this contract with Hobson Black to be expanded so that their services, including the engineering services, can properly support the bid package to spec out the full replacement of all the air handler units. An integral part of this cost increase isn't just a one-for-one swap out of the air handler units, but also to look at ways to provide much more energy-efficient air handler units, which is more complex because of space limitations up in the penthouse, which is where all these air handling units raise. So, we had to do a lot of delicate engineering and design work to make sure that we could optimize for the greatest energy efficiency. And that's part of this added cost of $120,000, is the engineering work to get energy-efficient new air handler units.
Any questions on this? Go ahead, Mr. Milliken.
Does Hobson Black have that expertise internally? Or do they go to outside consultants?
They go to outside. And this, in this case, is part of the original scope that they sourced out that specific engineering work to Peter Bassel and Associates, who has done a fair amount of work on our campus, including the Morris Lawrence Building.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Is this something that you would want, that you would want us to approve? Or can this wait for January?
Definitely.
This can wait? Okay. All right. All right, I guess that concludes our agenda. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting? So moved. Second?
Lot of enthusiasm.
All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.